I have been part of every political solution prepared independently to make Nigeria a better country for the last thirty years. Nigeria has only been around for fifty-eight years. I started in nineteen eighty-nine. In two thousand and nineteen, I've been engaged, fighting to expand our democratic space. I've been fighting against corruption so that we can end poverty. I'm fighting against ignorance so that we can give our children education. I'm fighting against men and women in this country who are stealing so that it can be enough for people who are hungry to eat. I am telling you that I have history. I'm unique in that way. There's no candidate, even some of the older candidates, some of them who call themselves retired army generals, retired customs officers, who can say that they have independently served this country the way I have in the last thirty years. And that is why I'm unique. And it's the reason why I can stand in front of anybody and say that this country will be better off in our hands instead of the hands of the buccaneers that put the country in the condition that it is today.
Okay, so your activism from your student days to date, as far as you're concerned, is your unique selling point. Before we sort of focus and have a conversation about that work that you've done, what qualifies your running mate to become the vice president of?
Okay. Rabishla, I said you were saying it.
Could you speak up?
Brothers and sisters, comrades, friends, wherever you are, very good evening to you. Good evening for hosting us. You ask a very important question. But when you read my CV, I couldn't even recognize myself. I'm here not a spare part or a spare tire to the, you know, party African Action Congress. Shoray has actually done well in moving the Take It Back movement, which transformed to a political party. We are now contesting for these posts. You realize that there is no better story to tell than to tell our own stories for Nigerians to vote for us, which is the real story. We represent the largest constituency in this country. This is the seventh geopolitical zone, you could call it, but it's a social, actually.
So you're talking about age here?
It's not about age. It's what the Nigerians, you know, are suffering from for all these years. We are a generation that our leaders have let down seriously. No opportunities for school, for hospitals, for roads and other infrastructure. And you realize, actually, when you want to study or you want to help slaves, you don't ask the slave masters or the slave ship captain. You ask the slaves themselves. And that's why we are here, to salvage Nigeria and our timid population that are yearning for good governance and good leadership in this country. You know, you have seen it all over. You understand. Our party came with the best of the manifestos. That is the Spicer hit. Because at the moment, you realize that Nigeria is testless. If it is full, you can't take it. Because there's nothing there, actually, for us to be proud of, having been let down.
You talk about your manifesto and now, you know, we'll get a chance to sort of go through the details of what you're trying to do. But I want to come back to Mr. Shoray and specifically focus on the activism. The activism, we know you were in university, spent six years, fought military junta. There seems to be a little bit of a gap in terms of your public history. And so I'd like to be able to fill that gap for Nigerians. You were at university, you graduated. Not much is known between that period of graduation and you setting up Sahara reporters. What did you do?
So I entered university in nineteen eighty-nine. I graduated around nineteen ninety-five eventually. After I was brutally attacked at the University of Lagos and injected with an unknown chemical substance. I then was delayed. After I graduated, it seized my resort for months. And I was mobilized to go to NYC. And I did my NYC in Yola, Adamawa State, between nineteen ninety-five and nineteen ninety-six. And after that, I was arrested and detained by the military junta under a bachelor after, on the day of my passing out parade. And I spent a week until a newspaper reporter had a punch, not an addition. I think Stanley Yakubu wrote a story and I was released. Because he put me in a guard room in a detention center, chained to the ground. And then after that, I left Yola, went back to my activism. By nineteen ninety-eight, I led one of the most popular struggles after I left university called, you know, disrupting the Nogai Games on behalf of students who were expelled by the military at that time. And after that, I became a little sick and traveled to the US in nineteen ninety-nine, before the elections happened in nineteen ninety-nine. And I've been in the US since nineteen ninety-nine. And now, it will be twenty years since then that I've been away.
So there, I mean, people talk about you coming, you know, from a sort of, I've heard talk about you being a poor fisherman boy. And now there is allegations or there are talks that you're worth something like ten million dollars. Your net worth is ten million dollars. And I'm trying to close that gap, to try and understand, how do you go from sort of being locked up, running into exile? And sort of ten years later, you founded a media website and you're worth ten million dollars? Because, you know, Nigerians have issues with leaders who talk about integrity but don't have it. And so it's good to establish these things.
Well, thank you. It's true that I grew up poor. I was fishing for my entire family at nine years old. I don't have a dime in my account. I accept contributions from people who are supporting this campaign because I had to leave Sahara reporters and I cannot be paying myself while I'm doing this. So I don't have that worth. But Sahara reporters is probably worth more. Let me say this to you.
Now, the reason, let me explain why that is important. Because as I understand it, you hold an American passport.
I don't hold an American passport.
Okay.
I have never changed my citizenship since I left this country.
Okay, so that the concern is?
I have a Nigerian passport and I have a green card, which is ever changed my nationality.
Part of the concern that have been expressed to me in sort of researching this particular program is, this particular program is the idea that there might be some sort of foreign influence behind you because of Nefosahara, from foundations and all of that.
No. When we walked in here, you introduced yourself. You said this is funded by the Sahar Reporters. You know, so I have also been funded, Sahara Reporters also been funded by the Makato Foundation before. It doesn't mean that someone has a foreign influence. You know, people have foreign influence who have to pay 1.1 million naira to get a US visa, just to visit for two days. People with foreign influence. You know, people with foreign influence, people who are helping Morocco to join the West African ECOWAS simply because they want to get money on the side to run for election. Those are people with foreign influence. I have absolutely no foreign influence. If there's any influence on me, it's the conscience of the suffering people of this country. And that's the influence that will drive us to victory.
Okay. Now, this question is for both of you. And even though he's known as the activist from your initial answer, I got the sense that you are also quite driven. The criticism I've heard against you is that you thrive on sensationalism and controversy. And the concern is that Nigeria is actually really right, very fragile right now. Ever becomes president needs to have the qualities of a bridge builder. People don't see that in you and maybe to a lesser extent also in you. What would you say about that issue of needing someone who will heal and who will?
In this race, who have been to thirty-three states across Nigeria in the last nine months. We've been to places as remote as Kebi, Zamfara. I've been to Shokoto. I have been to Bayes have states. We've been in states like Akwaba. We've been in some states that most Nigerians have never been to before. And we've been received. We were in Taraba last week. We were in Adamawa last week. And in all of these places, we get acceptance. We get great reception. And people are saying, look, this is our brother. We are the greatest build bridges, sorry, build bridges, bridge builders you can find in this country today. I have never met Dr. Raffai before, but when we met, we were brothers. And we were wondering, what is it has been dividing this country for so long? If people can get together?
Program last week, somebody raised the question, but I don't think the president or the vice president did justice to it. Which is the issue of the al-Majri carnage or pandemic? Because it's a serious problem, not just health-wise, but security-wise. In the last administration, I'm sure probably maybe his cabinet from the north. Because it's only you have to be a northern or a Muslim to actually appreciate the problems that has to do with the al-Majri.
So your question is, what is their solution to the al-Majri?
Yeah, what is the solution? Yeah, what plans do they actually have to abolish the system completely and not handle it with kid gloves or any sense of sensitivity?
Thank you very much. So the first question is about creating wealth so that our population? Okay, I have to take a quick break. And then when we come back, we'll start with the answers to those questions. Don't go away.
Stay connected on our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/ntanews online. Watch our live stream at www.nca ng slash live. NTA, you can't beat the rich.
Yes. It be like said, they want to tell another story again, yo. Now, so you know, say, if you would say I be superstar. But for me, the real superstars are those people where they go vote for the candidate of their choice without violence. So for these upcoming elections, be my superstar. Vote, no fight, no violence, because the election will be won.
And the Nigeria Television Authority with the support of the Makato Foundation. We are in conversation with the presidential and vice presidential candidates of the Africa Action Congress, Mr. Yeni Shoray and Dr. Raffai. Now, a quick reminder that those at home can actually take part by sending questions using the social media handles that are scrolling across the street. Those in the diaspora were told there are slight problems with the streaming, but we are doing our best to fix it as quickly as possible. Now, before we went on break, there were two questions. One was on growing wealth. And I think the second question was around the al-Majri. So maybe if we could start with the one about growing this country's productivity and wealth.
Thank you. Welcome back. We've just been told that people can't hear us. So we hope this technical glitch will be fixed so that we can interact with people.
I've just been told it has been fixed.
Yes. So with regards to population, we passed that period in the history of mankind that population can become a liability. Some of the fastest-growing nations in the world, China and India, are relying on their population to become wealthy. But without investments in our population, we can't be wealthy, even if we are five people in Nigeria. The truth is that we are not investing in the areas that can make our population become productive in a way that we can turn them to the new resource that can make Nigeria become a prosperous nation. We are not investing in education. We are not investing in health. We are not investing in technology. And certainly, we are not investing in infrastructure and human security. And it is this investment, and which that, this question came after we have spoken about our own Spicer hit that VP was talking about. That's talking about ten areas of intervention in Nigeria's institutional life under our government, in which that human resource of Nigeria, because oil is lazy to economy, ladies and gentlemen. Oil is not the future. And definitely, it is not the way we are doing things now that is the future. It's our people, the Nigerian people who are out there, who will make Nigeria?
Essential Town Hall Co-production between Daria Media.
Yes.
How much do you reckon you will need? What sort of budget are you looking at to be able to hire 200,000 teachers immediately, 160,000 health workers? To boost power from, did you say to 17,000?
Megawatts, yes.
Megawatts? And all of the other things that you've listed in your agenda. I want numbers.
Yes.
And how you intend to raise the money?
So with regards to power, to get us from the miserable 7,000 megawatts to 24,000, adding seventeen, I mean, 17,000 megawatts, we expected to invest about 10 billion dollars.
Where you getting that money from?
We come from investors who are interested in making their money the same way we had investors coming with telecommunications companies. And in one year, MTN took out 13 billion dollars out of this country from profit.
Shoray, what, Mr. Shoray?
Yes.
Let me tell you. That politician. And I'm trying to get into details.
I need to be specific.
Yes. And so the point I'm making is, under this administration, for example, and the previous administration, power was privatized, all apart from the transmission network. Hang on. Distribution as well as generation.
Yes.
And we had private sector people coming.
Yes.
And so I'm trying to understand, how does your plan differ from what we have currently? And I'd also like Dr. Raffai at some point to jump in because under the constitution, as VP, he's also head of the Economic Council.
Yes.
So I'd like to get a sense as well from him.
I want to correct the impression that power was privatized. Power wasn't privatized. They sought, they wanted to deregulate and privatize the power sector. They did the privatization, they didn't do the deregulation. They would their own generating stations so that we can have power. They didn't have one. We sold what belonged to Nigeria at under the market price to the same people who then turned around, got subventions from our government. And that was how the PDP spent 16 billion dollars generating darkness in this country. This government has continued the same thing. So when you claim that you want to deregulate and you don't deregulate so that there's no competition and you say you are privatizing and you are giving to your friends,
okay, so you're coming, you're coming today.
Yes.
What are you going to do?
I have said it and I'm repeating here again, that we're coming today. We are hooking up solar panels for four times. We are creating, you know, solar farms that will generate 4,500 megawatts of power. We are going to do 90 kilowatts per university, right? And we are going to do solar farms across the country for 500 megawatts each. It takes less than, you're listening to, please, if you listen to me, I'll deliver this to you so that Nigerians can hear it. It takes less than a year. It took Egypt less than two and a half years to do 14,000 megawatts at 500,000 naira per megawatts of power. It's the cheapest in the world. Here, we can even do it cheaper because we have plenty of cheap labor to do. I'm not saying we are going to abuse labor here. And it's the same Siemens who came to Nigeria trying to do the same thing. And people were asking them for bribes that went to Oraskon, a state-owned power generator, I mean, power company in Egypt to deliver the same. This is public information. You need leadership here. We don't have it.
I'm trying to understand.
That's the problem. You need innovation. We don't have it.
Because we do have a power act. I'm sure you know.
That what?
We have a policy and a law that has deregulated the sector.
I'm telling you that there's no deregulation.
And I'm trying, I'm trying to understand from the point of view of someone who becomes president. Because you will have to work within the law. And I'm assuming that's it. So I'm trying to get a sense of, so for example, if you say you're going to build solar power plants.
Yes.
Are these solar power plants going to be owned by governments? Who's going to give you the money for that? Those are the kind of questions I'm looking for answers for.
And I have answered it partially, that it happened in Egypt. It happened in Morocco. And there are people who are looking for places where they can build power stations, make their money, and let people enjoy power.
So you're just going to open up the market, basically, is what you're saying?
That is what deregulation was supposed to be in the first place, is to give license to people who will come and generate power, not to sell what belongs to the Nigerian people to friends or politicians and then give them subventions. And now, when there's even 3,000 extra to be evacuated, they don't do it because it doesn't bring profit to them. It is a cannibalistic system of power generation that is killing us. And people who are in the power business can testify to this. I'm telling you that we need leaders who are courageous not to face these people who are making it impossible for Nigeria to make progress. It's not an argument between you and I. It's an argument about the future of our people.
Dr. Raffai?
Yeah, thank you very much. I would like to make some of the points even clearer and louder. And then also dwell on the question on al-Majri system. You recall, in 2011, there was a Fukushima nuclear disaster in Japan. It's an energy-driven country. They almost went flat because of what happened. What happened? They invited a German and British company to go and they fixed it within one year. So it's doable. Nigeria can generate 12,000 megawatts in a year if the right incentive is given, the right sense, actually, and the courage and the sincerity from the side of government. And I don't like this pessimism that we really have to get stuck in this conundrum for any longer. Believe you me, when Zemis came to Nigeria wanting to sign PPP, that's public-private partnership to create the solar, Nigeria turned them down because of graft. People were asking for bribe and that's the norm in this country. They had to go to Egypt and then they got 14.5,000 megawatt in a matter of two years and at a cost of 7.5 billion US dollars only. So unless, when it's not really serious, but we are a serious party, we are courageous, we are determined actually to change the status quo. Now, you realize that economy is not leaves from tree that we could pluck. We really do do the work. We are going to leverage on the modern-day thing, which is ICT, to improve our economic output and production. You realize that California now is one of the richest part of America and richest part of the world because of the IT giants that are there, Google, eBay, Amazon and so on. Nigeria also has to catch up with these, actually, because gone are the days. And that's why our party came up with this vision for Nigeria that to really be internet-oriented. And sometimes they call this chap homo-interneticus, that he's no longer a homo sapien. Because we are really interested to bring apps, to bring cordages into Nigeria, to develop our people. In healthcare, it's now the anything. People create clinical decision support system, apps that help our diagnosis to go better.
Okay, let me, let me, let me go straight into your manifesto because I think, you know, the details that I'm looking for, I can find in there and then maybe we can have that conversation. You said you need an annual budget of about 500 billion dollars based on your manifesto to actualize your plans, which include recruitment of teachers, health workers, et cetera, et cetera. This is, as opposed to the current Nigerian budget, which is between 35 to 40 billion dollars. And I'm just trying to understand how your economic plan is planning to increase this budget tenfold, almost over just a four-year period? What are the funding sources, for example, outside PPP and all of that? What exactly, how are you going to find 500 billion?
Thank you.
In a country that we know is suffering from a lack of, if you like, productivity?
No. So just so that we correct it, we have a number of projects that we would implement over four years. And we're looking at how much it will cost.
Okay, so it's not a budget?
It's not a budget. There are no budget of Nigeria's around. It's been consistently about 35 billion dollars per year. Nigeria's GDP is around 500 billion naira per year. So what we are saying is that there are a lot of opportunities for us to increase our revenue. And we'll do so by, you know, of course, ensuring that all the leakages that are there with corruption and waste and mismanagement, we get rid of that. That could save us 5 billion dollars. Just let me finish there. And when we go next from there is how we can actually increase the collection of our taxes. The collection rate of our taxes is the lowest even in the African subregion. And right now, we're at about 7%. Ghana, our neighbor, has about 15%. What it means is that we can increase from what it is now, which is about 6 trillion naira, to about, you know, 10 to 15 trillion naira when we are effectively collecting taxes. We are not increasing taxes. We are just collecting company income taxes. We are ensuring that all of the tax categories are adequately and efficiently collected.
Okay, so how, how will you give tax breaks to stimulate growth for small and medium businesses? If what you're talking about is increased taxation? I mean, increasingly, you are seeing, let me finish, let me finish.
We said collection rate of taxes.
When we talk to a lot of the people who support you, they see you as the candidate of the common man, of the citizen who's been disadvantaged over the years.
That's right.
And yet here you are, talking about increasing taxes.
No, that's not correct.
Yes.
No, I did not say we increase taxes.
Okay, I misspoke. Not increase, collecting more taxes.
No, well, yes, collecting more taxes from people who otherwise... Let me explain to you very quickly what I mean by that.
Okay.
There are a lot of companies out there today who are deducting taxes from their workers and pocketing it without paying to the federal government. That is what I'm saying. As a reporter, I did an investigation recently and found out that most of the companies that are in Nigeria, including the big companies, breweries in particular, some of them are supposed to be paying 5 billion in company income taxes. They are only paying 800 million because they have friends in those sectors that can help them hide the books. Why do you think Lagos is doing well? It's because they decided that it is time to be collecting taxes. What they do with the taxes and who it goes to, you know, as part of the party, big men, is a different issue. But at least they are collecting the taxes. And if they were to be spending their taxes on the citizens, Lagos will probably be El Dorado by now.
So it looks like you're borrowing, some of your plans seem to be very similar to what the APC is currently doing.
No, no.
They've increased tax collection.
I, I rebooked that.
Mr. Tunde Fowler, for example, the man in charge of the federal inland revenue, has spent the last two, three years doing exactly what you've said should be done, which is getting people who normally don't pay taxes to pay, persuading those that have taken wealth abroad to start paying taxes on their assets, et cetera, et cetera. And so, again, the issue is trying to get clarity regarding why your drive is different from what they are currently doing, which has actually seen an increase in, in, in collection of taxes. And Lagos, that you give an example of, obviously is an APC state. And everybody's taking a cue from them when it comes to taxes.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying here, is that our own plan is different from theirs because their own plan is tax collection that is funding special interests. Our own is tax collection that is funding the people. That's exactly the difference. So I don't want to mention Tunde Fowler's name. I don't know him well enough to know how much taxes he's collecting. But if the APC is a party that we know very well, they are probably not collecting taxes from people who are in the APC. They are going after people who are owing taxes who are in other political parties. That is the trait of the APC. That's why I said I rebooked the comparison.
You know, this is not a debate. They're not here to defend themselves. So let's focus on your program.
Well, they, they are watching us, trust me. And their ministers were here, which was last week. So we watched them last week. We hope they are watching us this time around.
Let me quickly ask Dr. Raffai a government question that has come from someone and is related to what we're talking about. Amamata Suleman writes and says, "How do you plan to sustain the salary package of 100,000 of minimum wage that you have promised?"
Yes.
Amamata Suleman, maybe Dr. Raffai?
Oh, excellent. I like the question and this is not going to be anything near or close to what APC, you know, does or is doing. Yesterday, they passed through this council of state 3,000, 10, 30,000?
Twenty-seven thousand. Twenty-seven thousand. What we have, twenty-seven thousand, what we have is actually not a minimum wage, but a living wage. That's why we put it to a hundred thousand. And you realize, if you can help me do the math, an average worker is likely to spend at least a thousand naira for food on daily basis. And then to transport himself to work and then to have some savings for healthcare and then utility bills. Now, food, if it's a thousand and then multiply it by thirty days.
This is what is required, is what you're saying, by your calculation, this is what a worker requires.
And that's what we aim to achieve actually because it has a kind of positive feedback mechanism, multiplier effect. When you improve the wages, that in itself can control some level of corruption because you now disincentivize people to be tempted to corrupt, to be corrupted by people or vested interests. At the same time, this is the money they can actually use in sending their kids to school so that we can have a better Nigeria. These are the monies they can use to what access healthcare services, health as well. The healthier they are, the better they will be productive economically. And if you now put this together, you realize it is really important that we keenly look at this. Other countries that were almost at the same level with them, middle income or lower income countries actually are giving their workers higher wages than Nigeria. South Africa, for instance, is a hundred and thirty-six thousand naira compared to Nigeria. So even the thirty, uh, one hundred thousand we said is for the beginning of our term.
Okay, let me, let me, let me ask you if you've done the maths in terms of how much of an increase that is.
Absolutely.
It's a percentage increase of four hundred and fifty-six, which means you're going to see the federal government wage bill basically increased by almost two trillion a year. And that means we're looking at an increase that will take the yearly wage bill to about nine point one trillion. That is the math, if we go with what you're, what you're saying, based on what the federal government pays currently.
That's actually not correct.
It is correct.
Okay.
Please do the numbers.
Well, we've done our maths, that's why I'm saying.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes.
From, 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 from eighteen thousand to a hundred thousand is an increase that will mean you will be paying an extra seven trillion annually on wages.
I wanted to jump into that so that we can get this accurately to Nigerian people, right? Uh, there are about eight hundred and ninety thousand federal workers. That number due to corruption is bloated to about one point five million workers at the federal level. We are going to leverage on technology to get rid of the five hundred thousand ghost workers. I'm telling you that, that's the truth. And what it means is that when you are coming to work is either your fingerprint or your retina scan that admits you into the office.
Mr. Shorwe, when you throw a figure out like that, you need to be able to tell Nigerians how you arrived at the fact that you are showing Nigeria has five hundred thousand ghost workers.
Yes, no, no, we have been talking to, we have been talking to labor unions who know of this scam. Even the Nigerian police, I think last year, found about eighty thousand people who are ghost workers in their system. The former minister of finance found out there are ten thousand workers on the payroll of the federal government in the railway sector.
No, I'm not arguing that we have, we have ghost workers, I'm not arguing.
We are doing mathematics now.
No, different, 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 different governments.
But I want, but I want to.
No, hang on, hang on, different governments at different times
Yes.
have come in and have sort of exposed the fact that they've found ghost workers, including the current government and the one before it. What I'm asking is that you seem very clear and very emphatic about the numbers.
Yes.
You said you believe there are five hundred thousand ghost workers on the federal wage bill payroll. And I'm asking, what is the basis for arriving at this number?
It's completely, that's what I'm just telling you that we've been investigating, I will be giving you direct information that are even coming from government officials themselves. But to how much it will cost, you know, because the increase that will happen is going to be for about seventy percent of the federal workers on, on federal payroll, you know, minus the ghost workers, okay? Which, that's the first thing we do, we are going to purge them with technologies. If you don't have your fingerprint recognition, you can't get into a federal office under our government. If you cannot do retina scan, you can't get into office. And when you are leaving, we'll be able to tell if you came to work and when you left work because your eyes will reveal that or your finger will reveal that. It's already happening here, there's no reason why we are not doing what other smaller countries are doing. But coming to the cost now, we are looking at about one point five trillion naira. That's what is going to be added to the federal wage bill.
These are your numbers?
Yes.
We have a seven million, but you're saying based on the ghost workers, okay?
That's because we are, we are dealing first and foremost with federal workers. And what we have discovered is that if Nigeria is lose, that, that's the most equivalent of about one point something billion dollars. If Nigeria is losing so much money, right, to corruption and we plug it, you know, we get rid of ghost workers. There will be enough money to pay workers at hundred thousand naira, you know, per head. But let me tell you something about even the current increase that they've just done yesterday, that which is thirty thousand naira. Do you know how much the federal government said they are adding to the federal wage bill about twenty-four billion? That is the cost according to their own records from the budget office in which I read a few days ago. So it's not a lot of money, twenty-four billion naira is less than what the APC will use for their rallies in a few states. But we don't want to pay workers because we don't care about workers.
Okay, you know, this is federal, so the chances are if that happens at the federal level, um, we, we know from experience that before you know it, the workers in the states
Yes.
also start to agitate for an increase.
Yes.
And some states are not even economically viable. And so what is your view and what are you going to do regarding the states? Have you thought about that?
So whatever it is we increase at the federal level in terms of improvement in taxes, revenue, collection, stopping wastage, corruption and mismanagement, is going to go into a pool, a federal pool that will be shared to the state. So the higher, the more money we make at the federal level, the more money the states get. The reason why states are not paying workers is not because they don't have money in most cases, it's because we have irresponsible state governors. And I hope the states will vote them out in this election, even President Buhari said it.
I am sitting here and, and, and I'm, I'm again listening to you and again, you're sounding like other governments that have been here.
No, 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 no.
Let me finish, this issue of.
It sounds like you don't want to give me the opportunity.
Let me ask the question, then you answer.
To express empirically how we're solving this problem.
I will ask the question and then you can answer.
Yes.
I say this because here we are with someone who's talked about restructuring.
Yes.
And then we're talking about taking money from the center and sharing to states again. At a time when Nigerians are saying we need to look at how to make states viable so that they can stand on their own. But your solution in terms of wages for workers is that the center will save money and distribute it. It sounds very familiar.
It is not familiar because even when you restructure Nigeria, you are not going to leave the states at the behest of the, you know, restructuring without catering for them. There's still a lot of constitutional provisions that have to be made on how states can stand on their own. Look, people who are shouting restructuring are not taking into consideration some of these things. And that's where we are different, that's why we are not just jumping to the restructuring argument. And the people who are talking about restructuring are not interested in restructuring. They have a party candidate and a party they want to support to come back to power, that is what restructuring means. And now that they have found their candidate, are you hearing about restructuring anymore? But here is what I want to tell you about how we need to make states to be productive. There's a state called Kebi State, right, and they are growing rice. They said, and I cannot confirm this, so that when you are fact-checking me, that they make one hundred and fifty billion naira. There is no state in Nigeria that can make up to four billion naira from the federal level even on a monthly basis. But the truth is that a state that became creative and innovative, growing rice, is making enough money to take care of its people, you know.
Under a program pushed by the government, you want to replace?
That's, that's what you're saying, when you're saying that.
So they're doing well, are you giving them pass?
They're doing well because there's a government at the center that cares, but the state is also using its own innovation to make its own money. We've mentioned Lagos before, even though they are doing with whatever they are making.
Did I just hear you endorse an APC government?
No, 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 we are, there's no APC government anywhere, we are talking about things that are working with Nigerian people's money, the money at the central bank is not APC's money, it's the money of the Nigerian people. So if we are using it and directing it to, the farmers in Kebi State, they don't carry APC party cards. They are innovative, hard-working Nigerians who have always been rice farmers, who have been abandoned. But when they got the necessary boost, they are working to do what they need to do. So don't make it sound like it's an APC idea, we are talking about how, it is not. If, in fact, if you look at the APC manifesto, you can't find, you can't find growing of rice there.
The.
It's true, there's nothing in their manifesto that says we grow rice. They are just doing trial and error, anything that works, it says they are, anything that doesn't work, they attribute it to someone else.
Okay, all right, we unfortunately, I'm going to have to take a quick break and we can carry on when we come back. Don't go away. Welcome back, you are watching the candidates and we are in conversation with the presidential and vice presidential candidates of the AAC, Mr. Shorwe and Dr. Ruffai. Um, I'd like to get members of the audience engaged and ask a few questions. So the lady in front here will take maybe four and then come back to the candidates. Lady in front here, the gentleman in glasses, uh, the one right at the back in the cap and then the gentleman in the suit right here. So let's do the four and then come back to the, to the panel, yes.
Good evening, Nigerians and the AAC presidential candidates and his wife. My name is Princess Halim Ajubri. I am an integrated marketing communication professional and good governance, women and youth advocacy. My question is still on power. And I have every reason to take you back. And I'd like to remind you that power is on the exclusive list of the federal governments. And that you should know that the privatization that was done was based on that premise. And power drives industrialization. It drives security, it drives youth employment and underemployment, women's health, child mortality and the general health well-being of citizens of this country. And it's also drive tax collection because the cost of running business in Nigeria is higher than anywhere in the African subregion. And then I put it to you that you have not accurately explained to Nigerians how you are going to tackle power that is on the exclusive list of the federal government because you haven't said that you are going to remove it from there.
Thank you, the next question please, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Good evening, distinguished Nigerians, candidates of, the candidates on the podium. You will agree with me, my name is Shagun Awosaya, a random ordinary citizen of Nigeria. You will agree with me that a few misconstrued social constructs must be redefined historically, holistically in our policy for Nigeria to thrive. Namely, education as against indoctrination, erudition as against loquaciousness, leadership as against showmanship, and finally, success as against self-genocidal toil for unsustainable quick wins or gains. Let me put this to you, how critical will strategic alliances and unsustainable social re-engineering be to your administration if considered at all?
Okay, thank you very much. The gentleman here, yes. I hope you are taking notice of all the questions.
Uh, good evening, my name is Ikke Dzeyake, I'm a project manager and IT consultant. My question borders on human capacity development. I want to ask AAC, what plan do they have for young Nigerians? Uh, today, the United States is doing well because they invested so much in their human capacity development. Uh, we see little or nothing from governments, from the previous government, current government, in developing people, developing the youth, developing the, the minds in Nigeria. So what do AAC, what are they bringing to Nigerians?
Thank you.
In relation to government-added skills centers?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The last gentleman, then we'll come back to you.
Good evening, Mr. Shorwe, you mentioned something about the current government.
What, what is your name?
My name's Olapade Akim, an economist. You mentioned something about the current government by growing rice and I wanted to know that currently in Nigeria here, it's not only Kebi State that grow rice, Eboni of course, and some states in the southwest and the rest. And just because the government said we are running mono-economy, which is oil, we need to defacify. From defacification, we got to see the boosts into rice. What else been produced in Nigeria that you think as a government, if you are given opportunity, that you two can boost and produce, thank you.
Okay. So a few questions there and I, I will add a few more that are kind of related so that maybe you can combine them from people at home. Um, Alonso Adanjuma says, Mr. Shorwe, what plans do you have with regards to our educational system? Having spent twenty years in the US where there are foremost tertiary institutions as against Nigeria where our education has gotten so bad. Um, because you were asked about youth empowerment. Um, the youth, Mr. Nii Daniels says the youth of our country have been neglected over time. A bill for an act to establish a youth-driven organization, Nigeria Peace Corps, was rejected by the president. Um, would you have dealt with this differently or would you have done the same thing? So let's look at those, those questions.
Start responding to some of the questions, uh, somebody had already asked and then also to give something about the restructuring bit that you talked about. It is in our own interest and of course, the interest of wider Nigeria that we look at economic restructuring, not the restructuring where by political actors who won't have opportunity to really emasculate their people. You realize that there is a culture of perverse incentive in this country that even when the states are bailed out by the federal government, they ended up actually investing the money where it shouldn't be. Look at our markets in all the states, I think, almost all the states of the civilian, there had been fire incidences claiming actually millions and billions of people's property.
You're contesting for, for an office of president and vice president.
Yeah.
As far as I know, your party doesn't have a lot of candidates contesting to be governor.
Yes.
And yet, you know, you seem to be talking to me about the role of state governors.
Yes.
There's not much you can do about that, even if you are president and vice president.
You can actually leverage on their competitive advantage actually to provide them with incentive to grow and, and partner. Look at the state you come from, Zamfara, there is no local government in Zamfara State, fourteen of them are Muslim, without gold deposits. What is the state doing actually in order to, you know, bring out these resources? Some states have opportunity for tourism.
So I'm trying to understand how at the center you can influence the way a state is governed because I'm still not clear what you're, what you're saying exactly.
When the state actually run for the Xmas every time they're in trouble and that you could not have some, you know, policy networking with them, even if you don't belong to the same party actually to work for the common man? That is what our interest is, actually to see that the states on their own are more productive economically so that they can take care of their problems and their issues. And the quickest way to do that is to help them with strategic decision-makings in the way they undertake their duty.
What if they say no?
Oh, come on, in this country, the poor would really vote them out of office. I agree, because it disheartened me when you see serious investment that could be done and could improve the economic bit of these states that are not being taken. Those radical decisions have to be taken and we have some candidate at our own, in our own party and that's what we came up and that's what we are, you know, interested in doing.
Now let's begin to talk about some of the questions asked, the, the issue of.
There is one actually, somebody mentioned that Almajri system and I can tie it to the education system. Uh, you realize that there, according to statistics, it depend on who you look, almost thirteen point five million children actually that are out of school and majority of them are even this Almajri system. And I thought this government, Professor, Professor, President Muhammadu Buhari is from the north, Muslim, uh, would actually do something about it when he came to power. And he did nothing, he turned his back against them. And I understand that there is only one problem you can solve with no action, maybe alcoholic hangover. And I don't drink, so.
Okay, so what are you going to do?
We will really take them off the street, we will really inject two hundred thousand teachers to teach in our primary school. The education at the primary school level.
Wait, hang on, hang on, let me ask you a specific question. Where are you going to find those teachers?
Teachers?
We have seen, yes.
Yep.
We have seen that there's a dearth of skilled teachers.
Teachers, yeah.
Um, in the last few years, we've seen states actually test, even the ones that are in school and find that they are not competent.
Yep.
And where they've actually tried to recruit, some of them have had problems getting people who are qualified. So if you say to me, as soon as you enter office, you're going to recruit two hundred thousand teachers, the first question that comes to mind is where are you going to find them?
You realize that we somehow, um, like, that when we see a problem, we take back steps and say, okay, see no evil here, no evil top, no evil, teacher education. These teachers can be put to good use when you incentivize and then you put a lot of resource actually to re-education of the teachers as they go on.
So it wouldn't be an immediate thing, that you first have to re-educate them before you employ them?
In our, in our recruitment process, selection and then their distribution, we really have to be keen on what quality they have. But there are a lot of Nigerians that are roaming our streets that are not employed and they have the certificate and the right aptitude to teach in our primary schools. And the Quranic school education, you realize actually there are a lot of uh, ulama actually that are keen actually to see these children being re-absorbed into a formal teacher.
How much money will you put into education?
Look, if Nigeria would go, which it's unlikely, actually broke. One area that I'm sure everybody would be interested to put his last cobble is education and healthcare.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
When we did our research, Nigerians across all the regions we've been to, they're interested in having a good healthcare system and then education, education, education. When they met Shoroye on the road, Makarenta, Makarenta, that has always been this.
Okay, so, so again, I, I want a specific, I want a specific number. How much money will you commit to putting into education if you are elected as president and vice president?
So, uh, so we have uh, done our work, our research, and it's gonna be in two ways. The first is of course the normal budget trip process. And the next is of course the planning process over time. For instance, the thirteen million kids that we have been talking about and when you fact-check these people, different figures pop up on different areas. We discovered that with an average of a hundred thousand naira investment over four years, you can take them, all of them out of school. As a matter of fact, the Universal Basic Education Act makes it a crime not to send children to school in this country. And most people don't know that a president of Nigeria could be impeached if they don't allow kids to go to school because it's a constitutional provision uh, of ours. What I'm saying here is that one point three trillion naira over four years, you know, taking kids out of school. Special intervention funds are there. We have an education tax that is line follow always. You have states that are supposed to match grants from UPEC funds that refuse to do this because they don't send their children to school here. He was mentioning President Buhari and Al-Majri. The reason Buhari doesn't care about Al-Majri is because his children are not Al-Majri's. He doesn't send his children to school here. Yes, so what I'm saying here is that.
From a practical point of view, are you going to have a task force that's going to be on the streets, taking children off the streets, putting them into school? What are you going to do?
Look, when I was growing up under free education in those states, there were task forces taking us out of school. I mean, out of street if you don't go to school. And there are two ways. There are parents who are around looking for kids that don't go to school. They will drag you by your hair and send you back to school. That is how our African moral society operates. Of course, the war against the discipline once captured me on street and took me back to school. But don't say that I'm endorsing Buhari's. Yes, no, I'm just telling you that you can actually have the police do the job of enforcing the UPEC acts.
Okay.
But I make, when in the US and in the UK where you live, if you don't send your children to school, the police is gonna come after you.
Okay, so there's a.
It's just a matter of ensuring that they get the mandate and they get the memo that it's a priority to let children go to school. If they don't go to school, it becomes a law enforcement issue.
There's a religious, there's a religious aspect to the Al-Majri problem. Because a lot of the parents whose kids end up on this street actually send out their kids to get what they consider an Islamic education.
Yes.
So what will you do about that particular aspect of the problem?
You know.
Because the parents who feel they're sending their kids to get an Islamic education.
Yes. You know, I understand that very well. And I do not discounten us religious education. But what I'm saying is that there is a way we can innovatively also let these parents know that while their kids are learning in our primary schools, they can also get Islamic education. It's a matter of bringing the teachers from Islamic educational classes to come into the mainstream educational system. Look, you know.
So would you be willing to do that?
Oh, absolutely. I, I studied Islamic education, it was one of my classes even in those state. And Bible knowledge, you know, and also ifa and all these things, you need to just let our curriculum be open-minded enough.
Okay, wait, the time is very little, so let's move to the all the other.
And the guy who is an Islamic teacher on the same salary as the guy who is teaching science, they can match very well and be happy.
What about the issue of power that was raised? And the fact that power is actually on the exclusive list? And um, in discussing your plan, you didn't talk about how you're going to get around that problem?
That, you see, that's the interesting thing about Nigeria. So power is on the exclusive list, which means that the federal government has absolute control over power. But when it is time to sell assets in the power sector, it becomes a private issue. In fact, people tell you that business, government have no business in business. But when it is time to pay for, to power companies, power that they supply, they give the invoice to the federal government. I am interested in assuring that there's power. Whether it is exclusive or inclusive, whichever list it can belong to, as long as the, as, as the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, I can light up this country. It will be a legislative agenda that I will discuss with legislators at the National Assembly that, look, the most important thing is not the language in which we couch where power belongs, but how our people can get electricity. That is what is most important to me, you know. But what I'm saying here, and I, I, let me land. What I'm saying here is that this idea that we are deregulating and privatizing a sector that suddenly is also still in the exclusive lists and the federal government is not supposed to say anything about it is the oxymoron of the power sector. It's not oxymoron in my view, it's abracadabra. They don't want there to be light in this country. We have paid for it. Where did the sixteen billion naira that the PDP spent on power come from? The federal government!
Yep.
But nobody is holding the private sector responsible for darkness. It's the federal government that is responsible for the lack of electricity in this country. The federal government better guide its loans, recover what it needs to recover. What our people need is light, not excuses and where it belongs.
And.
And it sounds, and it sounds great, you know.
But you know.
Um, hang on, it sounds great and populist and you'll get your applause. But when you're in government, they're practical. Let, let me finish.
This is what they always tell us.
I'm gonna ask the question, there are practical issues, there are rules, there are policies that guide these things. And to be able to change those rules, you must either go to the National Assembly or find a way to get people across. And so her question is still valid because the federal government remains in charge. And so when you talk about deploying farm, uh, solar panels and all of that, there are real practical things to be dealt with in terms of who is allowed to do what. And that is really her question. How are you going to get around that particular fact?
But that's what I'm saying, it is still the duty of the federal government. The federal government is still the authority in charge of granting the power for people to generate electricity. It is still the federal government. It is still the federal government that is in control of the TCA, what they call the transmission company of Nigeria. So the federal government has not lost the power to power up Nigeria to the extent that I should be sweating about the legislative concerns about that. We have enough power as a federal government to light up this country. We've looked at the laws, we've looked at the rules. But the rules that nobody wants to talk about is the people who are sabotaging our ability to generate electricity. And as a result, we can't industrialize. Our children can't go to bed to do their, their homework because there's no light. We cannot have an economy that is built around darkness. That is the truth. She said it, that in this country, the cost of production is the highest because we don't have electricity.
Let me ask you a question. What are your thoughts on the current complaints about low tariffs from the supply side? Um, will you address steady power supply first or will you increase tariffs first?
No.
Because you know, there's that issue of what comes first? Is it the chicken or the egg? Because the current distribution companies argue that they are so regulated that they cannot charge what is a, a commercial rate for power. And that basically stops them from being able to invest and be able to do what they need to do. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
So the interesting thing is that it's a very simple issue. There's a consumer who is the demand side and there's a supply side. Do you know what is driving tariffs up? Is because they want to collect more than they are supplying. Just common give people prepaid meters. An average household in Nigeria consumes about six thousand naira electricity per month. But the power companies, being the greedy people they are, want to collect twenty thousand naira from you. If they take their sixteen thousand, I mean, six thousand naira per household or per meter, they still make a profit.
So let, let me ask you a specific question.
But you cannot continue, let me say this, you cannot satisfy the greed of people who are not interested in getting satisfied. And that's where government comes in. It is not a matter of regulation. Who are asked, you know, the Power Ministry now? The Minister of Power is looking for a third party to supply meters, prepaid meters to consumers. Because it can't get these greedy power suppliers to make it available. Even when they are available, why, you know what will happen? At the end of the day, the cost of those third-party involvement will still be transferred to the consumer. Whereas if you don't have special interests who sponsor you to office, who are your godfathers, you just have to be government. You take a stand and you say, sir, every prepaid meter out there must be given to consumer. And if you are not, there are people, plenty of people who are willing, and I mean it, willing to generate power. We need to supply power for six thousand naira per household, make enough profit for me. And then everybody will be happy. But it makes, you, you're making it sound like these things are difficult. But I'm looking at it from the point of view of what is easy to do.
I am, I am trying to understand the practicalities of what happens if you are elected and tomorrow you're president of Nigeria.
It's not gonna be tomorrow, it's gonna be February sixteenth.
And, and you're president and there are these distribution companies, they're already in place. They've bought all these assets. They're responsible for distributing power within certain areas. Everybody has their, your location, has their location. So I'm, I'm trying to understand from a practical point of view, you, you get into office, what exactly is going to happen? And I'm not sure I'm clear.
No, I'm, I'm very clear that they are getting to.
What will be your relationship, for example, with the, with the distribution companies? Are you, will you be seeking to take away their, their distribution licenses? What will you do?
Look, if some of them are not even carrying out what they have license to do, we cannot continue to pamper those ones. We'll take back their licenses. If you are not distributing, you don't, you don't sit down on a license and refuse to carry out the service for which the license is met. That is where the regulation was supposed to have, that was why I discussed the regulation earlier. If these license owners had been the ones who are generating their electricity, they would have been eager to distribute it. But because it doesn't belong to them and they got it.
They buy it.
Huh?
They buy it.
They bank?
They buy it from the generation.
They didn't buy anything, these guys were, they dashed it to them. Some of them are going to jail now. No, it's true. You know, some of them have been arrested for how they duped banks to buy these things. We gave them subventions. This country gave them trillions, I mean, almost a trillion naira subventions after we gave them the power sector generating companies at under the table, I mean, under market value prices. I mean, I have been involved in investigating these things. I'm just telling you that probably that's the reason why they will sit up. I'm not gonna do any body language.
Simply disrupt everything, that's what I'm hearing.
Is, why won't you disrupt criminality? That's the job of the executive section. It's the job of government, if there are criminals taking advantage of your people, do you just sit down there and say because?
Final question before we go on break. Part of the problems that Nigeria has, particularly with investors, is that people believe governments don't respect agreements. You have one government come, do a concession, give a license, agree a contract. Another government comes and disrupts it.
Yes.
And this has um, a serious implication for confidence. So those investors that you keep wanting to attract, the PPP that you're talking about, get a little bit wary of this country because they think people come and they change things. It sounds like what you want to do.
No. Do you know why those kind of PPPs are difficult to deal with? Because when they have a president that is called Fortunato, co- collecting bribes, you lose your integrity before partners. But this is the most important thing, you must understand. There are international agreements governing investment in every country. We have discussed MTN taking out thirteen billion dollars. If Saharibotter hadn't exposed, the federal government would not have asked them to bring back the money. And when they did, what did they do? They went back the door, we are only getting a tis something million naira back from thirteen billion naira that they took away illegally through the Central Bank of Nigeria. That is criminality. And, and that is what we are going to disrupt. But you knew, and you knew that what did they do? They went to judges to be looking for injunctions. Whereas they are supposed to just respect an agreement, not to take money illegally out of this country. You do it in the US, you are going to jail.
We have to be careful not to libel people. I know you are used to be sued, I'm glad.
No, they can sue me. They can sue me, I'm a presidential candidate, you can sue me.
I am going to take a very quick break, stay with us. Watching the candidates brought to you by Darian Media and the Nigerian Television Authority with the support of the MacArthur Foundation. Now, before the break, we started taking some audience questions and there were a few that we'd not dealt with. And if we could quickly before we enter the next segment. So there was a question around what your plans are for young people?
Yes.
Um, and then uh, your plan for uh, human capacity. And finally, there was a question around our culture, I think, and our sort of mindsets. So maybe if we deal with those really quickly before we move into talking about security and a few other things.
Well, with regards to young people, there are two very important things we must do for young people in this country. Is to invest in their education. And then after they get out of school, to find them jobs. And our party, our uh, mandate will provide over five million jobs and we're very specific about that. That in the power sector, along we're looking about to providing almost two million uh, jobs. You know, especially as we invest in a mixed bag of, you know, sources of providing power, electricity in the country. In the security sector, where we need a massive infusion of uh, personnel, we're looking into providing almost two hundred to three hundred thousand jobs, you know. Getting more recruitment into the police, the army, uh, and other security agencies that we need to keep us secure as a country. Uh, we are also going to invest in education in such a way that we revive every available scholarship that is out there for young people, for students. Uh, we've looked at the number of students in this country and we think and believe that we can afford to even give study allowances to students. And I know you're gonna jump at me as to where I'll find them.
Yeah, 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 because you.
Let me, let me, let me say, let me finish, let me finish. And you know, I have been in a country where I wasn't even a citizen, the US. And before I became, sorry, before I even got my paperwork normalized at Columbia University, I already had student loans, I had what they call Pell Grants provided for me as a student. Today's the night I could pay my rent.
The American.
And I am not, so I'm just saying that.
It's huge. They don't rely on one source of income like we do.
Do you know that?
The price of wealth is not, you know, crashing, all of that, so.
We have always, we have always used, we're sitting down here giving excuses on behalf of people who have failed.
I'm trying to get you to explain to Nigerians.
I am trying to tell the Nigerian people that with the judicious use of their resources.
What you want to do, this is the question.
I'm telling Nigerians that with the judicious use of their resources, we can support our country, we can support our young people, we can support our children, we can support our elders, we can support everybody, there's enough to go around. But when you continue to feed the greedy, the needy will always suffer. You cannot satisfy the greedy minority in this country.
Okay, so let me ask you a specific question about that minority.
I want, I want to jump in with one more thing.
No, no, quick question, quick question.
Yes.
The National Assembly.
Yes.
Um, are one of the institutions that Nigerians generally, when you talk to believe are overpaid?
Yes.
And utilize a percentage of our resources that is way over one.
That's exactly.
What are you going to do about that?
Exactly where I was coming to. You know, and this exactly answers the question of people who are earning minimum wage and people who are earning maximum wage. The National Assembly, a senator in Nigeria is earning fourteen million naira. This is not, I didn't make it up. If you are earning thirty thousand naira, the, their own minimum wage or the twenty eight thousand, twenty seven thousand naira they approved at the Council of State yesterday. It will take you thirty eight years to make the salary of a senator in Nigeria in a month. A monthly salary of a senator. It takes another, a Nigerian worker earning thirty thousand, thirty eight years to make it. It takes a professor who is earning four hundred and fifty thousand naira per month. It takes a professor who is earning four hundred and fifty thousand naira per month, almost ten years to make. But here, you don't like it when I say that there's money for the poor. You know, you want me to explain, we're saying our problem is not wealth generation in Nigeria, it's wealth distribution. That's our problem. So we are circulating our wealth in the, in the hands of just a minority.
So there are two issues you raised here and I'd like you to quickly deal with them. Again, time is a factor. And the first is really trying to understand how as president, you will get the National Assembly to review.
It's not about.
No, no, because at the end of the day, they make the laws, right? So and the second issue is that you, you, you talked about this. Are you saying you are satisfied with our productivity level in this country? Because you keep saying our problem is not wealth generation, it is wealth distribution. So are you happy with that productivity?
The productivity will happen when we invest in our people, when we invest in education, when we invest in power. You know, we have a port, a national port that can expand, but it also has become a basket case. So you are there pouring water into it, the National Assembly is taking his own, the subsidy people are taking their own. Until you plug that, you have a whole port and the port can expand because now there's power, there's productivity. You have students who are going to school and you can then be looking into a future of a knowledge economy, where information, because that's what I want to get to. Somebody asked me here before, you know, what other products can you do after rice? No, I'm not after cocoa or gold. I'm after the knowledge of Nigerians that we can sell into the future. You know, because if you look at even the stock markets of major countries in the world, it is not cocoa and rubber that they are selling. They are, you know, Amazon is there, you know, Microsoft is there, Apple is there. If you invest in our universities, FUTA can produce one student, that is the Federal University of Technology in Accra or the one in Mina, can produce one student that can innovate to the extent that we can have a Facebook founder in this country that will, that will be ruling the world.
How will you persuade the National Assembly to cut down on?
So the National Assembly, going to their own case, there is no way we can accept an illegality. The allowances they are paying themselves according to even the laws of the, are illegal. They are not entitled to more than one million naira or thereabout in allowances. So the mere fact that somebody has taken over the lunatic asylum and is awarding himself, I mean, themselves what they like, doesn't mean that it is legal. We can challenge it. We have a court in this land, we can challenge and see how much are they entitled to, how much should they be collecting? If we cannot get them to drop it, the country might as well drop them. That's the truth.
Now, let me quickly, because the time is limited, but so Ufai, um, security.
Okay.
Nigeria is facing multiple challenges on the area of security. Uh, we are fighting an insurgency in the northeast, Boko Haram. We have bandits and rustlers in the northwest. Uh, we have a little bit of issues with farmers and others in the central part of, north central part of Nigeria. There's still a bit of restiveness in the east with organizations like IPOP talking about, you know, breaking away and forming Biafra. What are your plans for securing Nigeria?
Oh, well, you actually highlighted the fact that we are dealing with hybrids of criminal elements here and there from Boko Haram in the northeast and then down to the Niger Delta and the agitation of the IPOPS and co. Uh, you realize that they have something in common, all of them, meaning there's some sort of complacency at the center where the generals, the police, uh, the hem of our security have not been actually doing very well to what they are assigned to do. And then if you now unpack other security challenges like the harders and the farmers clash has its own uniqueness in some ways. So you really have to break down what sort of security challenge is and then to actually develop an innovative solution towards it. But the first is actually to know that Nigeria will do better, we will live in peace and progress. One, we don't condone anybody's crime because he belongs to such a tribe, creed, religion or anything. We really have to have a way of bringing people accountable to their crimes, whoever they are. If you take the farmers, harders clash, well, we only have to reflect on what is happening in the Sahel. They have always found themselves in the midst of the desert. They don't have water, bodies and so on. But they still produce there economically prosperous to some extent, no killing like the scale we have in Nigeria. So you realize in Nigeria, for us to solve the problems of harders and cattle, we need to actually change the way we do agriculture. We need to adapt to the climate change and the issues around it. And then of course, last time, I'm sure you saw the video, if you did your homework well, the full line is you made in Taraba and Jalu, who are asking Shorri, when are we going to have schools for our kids? When are we going to have a better, uh, you know, system to take care of our cattle? We're tired of being killed and so on. Then he said, well, it's the commercial ranching, which has the potential actually for these harders to actually access animal sciences product, meaning the way they could profit faster and better, they can graze. And then of course to get veterinary care from the government at some people and then some PPP with interested people, actually, we can actually have commercial ranching. These are likely to fatten their cows, to produce more, create a value chain along that, that can feed us with milk. And there you have more prosperity. Agree. We don't have dams, infrastructure, I very few.
I am so sorry to keep doing this to you, but that is exactly what this government is proposing.
What?
Ranching.
The government is, the, the government is.
Have they tackled the adaptation of the climate change? They didn't mention it.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out.
The government is proposing grazing corridors and cattle colonies. They are different from commercial ranching.
And ranches.
No, I'm not aware, I mean, no, look, you had a hectic time interviewing the president and you have to hear that side. So maybe there's a problem of understanding of what he meant, you know. We, we went through that here. So what they are saying is that they want grazing corridors, they want cattle colonies. We are proposing commercial ranching, in which case somebody can own a ranch. There are twenty million cows roaming around in Nigeria. And you'll find out that because they're even roaming around in ways that are not productive, they hardly can produce milk and most of them are suffering malnutrition. If you keep them in a ranch, they will be fat cows. You know, and anybody can go into the business because the cow meat business is a three billion dollar industry.
Yep.
You know, that we have not tapped into. But beyond that, they are droppings. The cow from which we can generate over one thousand megawatts of electricity. So this is what innovative leadership is about, not this analog leaders who are talking about the past. You asked the president here last week with due respect about how to solve the, he never mentioned commercial ranch. I watched him.
The VP did.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm saying what the VP knows about Nigeria, what the president knows, they are two different, you know, me and him. Yes, you see, going by what we saw here last week, there is a miscommunication between the VP and the president. So it's a bifurcated presidency, but our own will be one. Yes.
Boko Haram, Boko, Boko Haram, Boko Haram.
Yes.
What is your solution?
Solution to Boko Haram is direct. Every ten years, any local insurgency of any kind must be defeated by a country. They usually lastness, gestation period of insurgencies of that nature. But the problem with Boko Haram was that the moment it transmitted from bringing a crisis to a business, there was no way it was going to end. As a reporter, I was the first person was reporting that army generals were not buying equipments. They were not paying, their soldiers were on the front lines. And I was derided for it, that it was because I didn't want the other party to win. Eventually, how many of the generals were arrested, prosecuted in the army, in the navy, in the air force? But you know what? When they got to the army, the record of the prosecution disappeared.
Okay, so when if you become president, will you, will you arrest and prosecute army generals?
Absolutely. You know, I have said, not only will I do that, any army general that has been involved in fighting the Boko Haram insurgency will be asked to leave peacefully the armed forces because that is not a general that can win a war. But when you keep them around, the president said it, I think it's on Rice TV, that he realized that some of the army overstayed their usefulness. But today, he has not fired them, he has not relieved them of their responsibility.
Under, under a Shorri president, you see a purge of the army, taking out the top people.
That is something that you do from time to time. It's natural with people who are, you know, sometimes even without corruption, fatigue sets in. What we have found out in the armed forces, instead of allowing the younger, well-trained officers to take over command positions, the older ones, the corrupt, you know, big fat ones don't leave, even though they don't leave Abuja. But they have refused to allow promotion of people who have been trained because they don't want them to become progress, that they don't want them to make progress within the armed forces. And these are the guys that are willing to wipe out these guys. But the ones that are making money off of it, they don't want the Boko Haram insurgency to end.
Okay, I will take two quick questions on security, just to wrap up this section. Um, okay, so the gentleman here in the black suit with the blue shirt, please sir, go to the mic. And then the gentleman right at the back. Yes, sir, just, just come. Because we've literally got five minutes, you need to be quick.
Good evening, Mr. Shorri. Because of time, um, I want you to tell Nigerians how differently will you want to fight corruption? Because that has not been tackled on this podium. That is a reminisce. Then two.
No, 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 sir, no, sir, no. So please, could you have respect for people, please? Uh, there's five minutes to go, sir. So how, how would you tackle?
My name, my name is Caleb Tereyikwa. I'm the gubernatorial candidate on the platform of African National Congress in Benue State. And over and over, this question gets thrown to me, the issue of hestmen and farmers clashes. And the VP answered a part of it. But the issue is that even in commercial uh, ranching, you need the people to give the land. The problem down there is that people are not ready to give the land because there is now a toss of an emotion and cultural clash between these two people, forcing them to give out the land for commercial. They perceive it as you are trying to force them to be defeated in the war.
Okay.
So it's an emotional issue. So how do you tackle that? Thank you.
Okay, and, and I'm going to add a final question and if we could end on that, then we'll go. You were quoted as saying at an event that you want to legalize marijuana and make it a commodity that can generate money. I'd like to understand what you said, whether you were quoted, whether it's a question of legalizing it for use domestically as well or whether it's going to be legalized just as a business for export. And you've got literally a minute.
I'll answer that first because I know it's very important. Uh, we are legalizing it for export. It's, there's a huge market out there, uh, for cannabis. Uh, the one that will go in Nigeria is called Cannabis Survivor. It has a lot of medicinal use. And the only part of marijuana that people worry about is the part that has THC. And there's marijuana that can be grown that would not even contain that marijuana or the hemp can also be used in place of.
So you're not looking to allow Nigerian youth to be smoking anyhow?
The, already, anybody that wants marijuana in Nigeria can get it. I don't have to worry about them. And I'm telling you, it's available anywhere you turn in this country. Marijuana has always been available. People deceive themselves. What I'm saying is that we have NDLA burning one point five trillion naira water of marijuana every year. Canada is in need of it. Let's pack it and send it to them, you know? The US is in need of them and we can make, and that can help us diversify our economy by the way. People who own those states can get four billion dollars from marijuana in a year, a dosed it and that triangle, the marijuana triangle, delta.
Are, are you worried at all that because you end up with a business in weed, you may end up with, um, a situation where in many ways you are enabling um, a bigger population to use marijuana? Is that a concern at all?
No, no, it's not, it's not a concern because the medicinal value of marijuana, if you.
Do you smoke?
No, no, I've never smoked marijuana before, never.
But let me, let me.
You keep talking.
I've never, I've never smoked before, I've never smoked before.
I have to come in here. Yeah, actually, we're aware of the use of illicit drugs in this country and it's a big epidemic over the last couple of years. But the government of President Muhammadu Buhari didn't do much in that direction. Because a report came in two thousand and fourteen that there was never a time in history when this illicit drug became cheaper, more available and in their purest form than that. But the government did nothing in terms of prevention, actually, of enforcing, actually, children and other measures. Then a video came up from BBC as a documentary.
You really have very little sound.
And that actually made Nigerian government to have a knee-jag reaction. They banned the importation of codeine, I guess, and that created a balloon effect. Now people are sniffing gutters, are doing all that. So the best is actually to tackle the problem head on from different angles.
Okay, the corruption question is really important. What are you going to do different from what's happening now?
We're tackling corruption and we don't have time. We're using preventive measures. We talk about even paying people living wage so that they not start thinking about stealing for the future. You know, there's need for enforcement, but most importantly, because corruption is carried out by the highest people in this country, they are the ones who are the most corrupt. There has to be consequences, you know, for people to know that that it is not all right to be corrupt and get a shift anxiety title, sit in front of the judge.
You will need the judiciary. There are issues that we have heard are going on.
Enforcement will help us even in the judiciary. Look, Nigeria has been playing around with corruption for a long time, but you know, as an individual, I had been fighting corruption for the last twelve years on Sahar reporters alone. The Chief Justice of Nigeria that is on that trial, and I was the first person on Sahar reporters to put out his account saying that he has money that he can't explain. Do you know what happened when I did it? The EFCC issued a statement that I was lying. Now, when it is politically expedient, it's undergoing trial. So you know what it is. So hestmen clash, I wanted to say about land.
Yes.
There is enough land in Nigeria that you don't have to force anybody to give you land to do commercial ranching. What, why we call it commercial ranching is that if you give up your land, you are protected by law so that nobody takes it from you, you know? Listen, the Redeem Church, every year, they slaughter over twenty thousand cows when they have the Holy Ghost thing that they do, Congress that they do, they can have their own ranch. You know, I make fun of the people in the southwest. If they kill a cow in the southwest, only the blood will be left. They eat every part of it, but there's no ranch. But when Awolawa was around, he created a ranch in Akuna. The Kalaban ranch that is there today that is being used for, for tourism, used to be a cattle ranch.
Okay, so let me ask a final question on that before we go away. Are you at all concerned about the people whose way of life you would be disrupting? Who are also Nigerian citizens? So the Fulanis that are used to grazing.
Yeah.
What are, I, 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 you, what are the, the plans for them? Because you know, once you sort of take away that, that, it's a way of life.
We're not, we're not taking away their way of life. I am doing this based on my conversation with a Fulani man or a number of Fulani people who have said that they will be comfortable raising their cows in a ranch. And the reason why the Fulani man is walking around with four hundred cows and his children and his wife is because he wants to make money. Not because he wants to be lean. If they want to be lean, they can go to do marathons for us at the Olympics. But it's about money and it's about innovation. A Fulani man can be in a ranch and still be walking around in a ranch on the back of a horse. And you love to see him, it will even become a touristic center where you can go and see the new Fulani man and his ranch and, and his cattle.
You're aware that in the Mambila Plateau, for example, ranches exist.
Yes.
And yet, these issues that we've had are still ongoing. You've got clashes between Fulani ranch owners and Mambila farmers.
Yes.
Leading to hundreds of deaths and these clashes happen, they die down, they happen historically. Um, suggesting that perhaps the problem isn't that of people not being in ranches. What are your thoughts on this?
No, no. So how many ranches do we have? And we have often discussed the issue of climate change. You have a huge expanse of land also in what used to be Sambisa Forest and beyond, at the Lake Chad region that has been taken over by terrorists. You are not taking back from them. Our own position is that there will be a holistic solution, that, you know, we drive Boko Haram out of the place, we freeze up the land almost the size of the state of Virginia in the US. The people who want to go back to Sambisa Forest, for example, may not need ranch because the place is available for free for you to. because the place is available for free for you to graze. But I'm saying that you can duplicate ranches that is not only in the Mambila area. And you know the reason why the issue of Mambila is different, is that people are looking at it from who is superior to who. And this is where you start to talk about the security agencies at the top and how people view them. You, when they intervene, when there's a clash, when you see the Minister of Defence acting as if he's on the side of one side against the other, you have a problem.
Sadly, we've run out of time and I have to leave it here. Thank you so much, Mr. Shorri.
Thank you.
And Mr. Yabir.
Hope you'll be there in our inauguration.
Yes, and, and, and I'll be reminded, there's a final important question and I need a short short. If you lose, will you accept the results of the elections?
If elections are fair, there's no way we can lose.